Call this meeting to order if we can get a roll call, please.
Vice President Bennett Kill.
Here.
Member Chung.
Here.
Member Choak.
Here.
Member Qualcheck.
Here.
Member Leto.
Here.
Member Nelson.
Here.
President Fay.
Here.
If we could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag.
Okay, well, it is so wonderful to see so many of you here tonight. We're very excited to celebrate our Lincoln basketball teams. If I can call our coaches up, Coach Sakowitz, Coach Oni and Coach Bonadour. And I'm going to leave it to you all to decide who wants to talk first. I think what we're going to do is after each of you speaks about your individual team, we'll wait until after everybody has, you know, been celebrated and then we'll take individual team pictures at the back when everybody's been acknowledged. Okay.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kyle Sakowitz. I teach eighth grade math at Lincoln. And this is my third year coaching the seventh grade year olds basketball team. We have, well, girls coming up real quick. I have a few of them. Seventh grade girls coming up. All right, I got four of my 12 girls here, so one-third of the team. Math teacher, I gotta throw in a fraction there. So this was a really, really fun season, coming off an amazing season last year. We were conference champions and I'm happy to repeat, say we repeated as conference champions this year. We had an overall record of 13 wins and two losses. We won the conference tournament and we were undefeated in the regular season conference schedule. We ended the season on an 11-game winning streak, so hopefully they can continue that in the eighth grade. So four of the girls here tonight are Sadie and Nicole and Matea and Leah. And they showed tremendous growth throughout the season, so I hope that they all choose to come back and play as eighth graders. It was just a really fun season to play in the conference and just to see their growth. Just a very easy team to coach, just so coachable. And I probably shouldn't say this, but before the season, we had a coaches' meeting and all the coaches in the conference showed up. And I'm not going to name the school, but one school was high and mighty, thinking that they were going to win conference this year. And not only did we win conference enough this school, but we beat 13 three times in the season. So that felt pretty good. So yeah, so back-to-back conference champions, seventh grade, hopefully we do it again next year. Girls, thanks for coming and thanks for an amazing season. All right, I think Coach Oni's going to do seventh grade boys next.
Wow. Is this on? Yeah, it is. I love the attention though, not Mr. Larson. I'm Julius Oni, coach of the seventh grade boys basketball team. My first year at Lincoln, first year teaching in the suburbs after being in CPS for eight years. And I gotta say, what an introduction to Lincoln athletics. Boys, can you stand up for a second so we can give you a round of applause? So true story, piggybacking off of Mr. Sakowitz's coaches' meeting. So when I had my coaches, you guys sit down now. Good job. We had our coaches' meeting and there were a couple of schools that were talking about how, okay, yeah, this school is going to take it, this school is going to take it. And obviously I had no idea what I was getting myself into, so I'm thinking to myself, oh, okay, it's going to be a tough challenge this season. And these boys were resilient. These boys brought max effort every day in practice and every game. And I couldn't have been luckier to coach a wonderful group of boys that came out every day wanting to prove themselves. And we talked about complacency every single day. And they treated every single game like it was the only game on the schedule. They brought in on defense. They got turnovers, easy buckets. And after each game, when we won, they were happy for about five minutes and they knew there was still a bigger task at hand. And I'm glad to say we accomplished that task by going undefeated in the conference, during the regular season and the tournament. So, boys, I want to say thank you very much for making my first year so memorable. I appreciate you guys. Thank you, everyone.
Hi, everyone. How you doing? My name's John Bonadour, eighth grade girls' basketball coach. Girls, why don't you come on up too? Come on up, come on up, girls. Even Victoria in her crutches here. Hopefully a speedy recovery for her. So this is my 11th year being associated with the girls' basketball team. This group was truly one of a century. They really, they won everything there was to win over the course of their two years at Lincoln. This year, we won conference. We won the Kate Conlon Gold Tournament, which was something unbelievable. We won our new conference tournament we had. These girls actually led the way in beating the staff in our student versus staff game. And they also beat the eighth grade boys in a couple quarters of basketball when we played a little thing there too, so they were amazing. And of all the years I've been here, I've never seen a team like this, just as their basketball IQ and their abilities and just camaraderie and the energy that they brought every day. It was so much fun to coach and, you know, a lot of happy tears were shed at the end because it was such a fun time. I'm going to miss coaching them. Can't wait to see them in high school and watch them continue doing their stuff. I'm going to pass out, got to call out some names just because I know we got some people that aren't here with us. So our team was Molly Brulette, Kaya Doyle, Olivia George, Claire Johnson, Maradee Kane. Maradee, why don't you come get your thing right now then? Good job, Maradee. Mary Cherise Kane. Gabby Makapinlak. Mia Marling. Victoria Menheim. Kaylee Polster-Crawley. Bryn Samp. Ashley Skelton. Lexi Veros. And that is our whole squad. It was a great year. I'm so happy, Coachy Girls. Thank you for everything you do all year. And again, I'm so excited to see what you guys do in the next four years of high school. So keep doing your thing and be amazing.
Thank you so much to all of our teams for coming out and congratulations for everything that you've accomplished. Right now, we're going to, the board is going to move to the back of the room and we'll take pictures, starting with the seventh grade girls and just team by team. Okay, thank you all again for coming out. You're welcome to continue celebrating, but we're going to move on with our meeting. At this time, we have a spotlight on Fairview School Connection Clubs, so if we can hear from Principal Ovis. Tough act to follow, I know.
Sure, everyone in the back's got to pay close attention to this. All right, well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you about something exciting that we've been doing here at Fairview for the past year called Indoor Recess Connection Clubs. Prior to starting this initiative this past January, our, with our fourth and fifth grade students, indoor recess was held in either the gym or in classrooms by homeroom. And while students had some choices on what to do, it was really limited to what was happening in that space assigned to them. So with Indoor Recess Connection Clubs, on days when there is indoor recess, students are now given choices on how they'd like to spend their time from a menu of options based on feedback that we received from the students. So there were three primary reasons why we made this change. First, we wanted to give students a voice. So prior to starting this whole thing, I agree, it's so much fun back there. I've never felt less fun.
They're very excited about Connection Clubs too.
They are, they are. I feel bad that none of them got to experience it, but I don't think they feel bad. So the three main reasons why we made this change, we wanted to give students a chance to share their voice and so we gave them a survey. Hey, what would you like as students to do if, when we have indoor recess? And I had some surveys that we put out and really incorporated their voice into the whole operation. Next, we wanted to have them, give them the opportunity to have choice. And that, I mean by that is like day-to-day choice. So whenever there is indoor recess, they get to choose. Like today, if I feel like drawing, I can go to the drawing room. Or maybe I feel like getting some energy out, I'm going to be in the gym having some active game time. So they have that day-to-day choice that can vary each time that there, we have an indoor recess that's called. And then last, it's for positive connection with peers, being able to connect with students who might have similar interests to them that they may not already know across his grade level, so they can connect with kids in different grade levels from them. And we've seen some nice connections made as a result. It also, we feel, aligns well to the strategic plan with outstanding student experiences, as we do think it's helping our experience of our students to be more engaging and more, more fun, and they really do get excited about this. So in the video you'll see in a moment, it highlights the initiative and the benefits it's brought to our school and our students. And special thanks to Heather Salerno for putting this together for us.
At Fairview Elementary, we strive to create outstanding student experiences. This year, we are expanding an exciting indoor recess initiative to all grades, and it's already making a huge difference for our students.
In the past, indoor recess meant all students gathered in the gym. It was crowded loud and didn't offer much variety. Last school year, our building leadership team reimagined indoor recess. They created a model where students have choices and can enjoy different themed activities in various rooms around the school. And beginning in January of 2024, the initiative was rolled out to our fourth and fifth grade students.
This is socializing.
This is where we come for, like to play games on our computer during indoor recess.
Also the silent ball and mind soccer. There's other things too.
The indoor recess initiative has been an incredible asset here at Fairview. By giving the students the choice to engage in activities they enjoy, we have seen a noticeable improvement in their happiness and overall behavior.
We don't have to be like in a room with everybody in there and it's not like a.
It's like a quiet space.
Yeah, it's like it's a quiet space and like it's just kind of relax.
And I think for the recess supervisors, we are enjoying, I think, maybe making connections with those kids that are in the room. There is not so much chaos when we were, let's say, all in the gym or all in a hallway. And overall, we have just, this has just been a really positive experience.
After seeing the success of our pilot program with fourth and fifth graders, we invited our second and third graders to share their ideas about what indoor recess could look like for them. They've been just as enthusiastic and creative.
In December, the Principal Advisory Committee met with Principal Office to provide valuable feedback and guidance on how to best roll out the indoor recess initiative to our second and third graders. The Indoor Recess Connections Committee shared insights on what worked well with the fourth and fifth grade indoor recess rollout, highlighting strategies that engage students and created positive experiences. They also offered recommendations for adapting the process for younger students, ensuring a smooth transition and greater success as we expand the initiative across grade levels.
I'm so excited about class days. I'm so excited for activities in the gym. I'm so excited for the quiet.
When we tried about gym and the coloring, we called it.
Game bedroom down.
And we might just not be close.
Everything and about trying new things for indoor recess.
This initiative is more than just a fun way to spend recess. It's about providing our students with choices that reflect their interests, while also supporting the development of essential skills from our portrait of a graduate, collaboration, adaptability and critical thinking.
At Fairview, we're committed to bringing outstanding experiences to every student. I couldn't be prouder of our students, teachers and families for working together to make this vision a reality.
So we actually just started this with second and third grade. Part of our school improvement plan this year was to, well, last year was to try it with fourth and fifth and to see how it went. And so we tried from January till the end of the year. And by the end of the year, we realized, yeah, this was really working well. We just needed to figure out logistically how we were going to make it happen for second and third grade. It's just a bit more complex with younger students. So, and the time that indoor recess falls after lunch, they'd be transitioning from this space to their, to their locations, which is a bit more tricky. So we had a committee that was formed throughout this fall that created those procedures and Grace and I were able to teach the second and third graders right when we got back from winter break. And we've had three days this week of very cold weather to try it out and they love it. They really do. And so it's been, it's been a lot of fun and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Probably not questions, but just a lot of kudos. It seems like a lot of fun. I love all of the children that also, like me, would prefer a quiet room as opposed to a noisy gym. So it's nice. It's nice that they get that opportunity to be, just to experience different things. Chris?
First of all, thank you for the presentation. I actually, I, what I really love about this is that this is just a great example, a small one, but really powerful one, of us living our strategic plan. And, and that's awesome. We've talked a lot about having a student board member and we're all fired up about that, but you know, this just goes to show that student voice can apply to all of our kids, right? No matter how young. So this is awesome. And I will say, as a parent of a third grader, this is a huge hit, so. And I will say that, given that where we live, having this creativity around indoor recess is particularly important. So, you know, if we, if Fairview was in San Diego, maybe we wouldn't get to, to leverage this, but, but really awesome job by everyone and this is a really cool thing. Nice addition to Fairview. Thanks.
I similarly just wanted to say, like, it's really fun to see, like, the Principal Advisory Committee is in action and, like, see that student voice coming in. So just appreciate you guys taking that and really running with it. So thank you for that. It's awesome. Thank you. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, everyone.
We now have an opportunity for community comments. The District 57 Board of Education welcomes community participation. In an effort to both listen to our stakeholders and keep the meeting moving, I want to remind everyone of our public participation procedures and guidelines, which is available at Board Policy 2:230. Individuals wishing to address the board can do so during the community comments portion of the agenda. Individuals should provide their name and limit their comments to three minutes. Please remember, this is not a dialogue between you and the board. The board is in listening mode during this time. Individuals wishing to contact the Board of Education are welcome to do so via the D-57 website under the Board of Education tab. Individuals should behave with respect and civility towards others and abide by Board Policy 8:30, visitors to and conduct on school property. Are there any community comments at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into staff and superintendent reports, starting with our CFAC presentation.
I think I get to make the same joke every time, but not as exciting as indoor recess, but we do get to talk finances tonight. But I am really excited to, to speak this evening. I have some of our CFAC members here and Fred Schaefer is going to come up a little bit and do part of the presentation as well. But I just, I can't say enough about the committee and I write my notes and I know that later on in the committee, I thank them, but, but I'm just going to start off by saying it's, it's really an amazing group of people who come together with lots of differing backgrounds and understanding of finances. And it really helps, I think, our committee with some people understanding right away what we're talking about and some that need a little bit more time, which helps us to then, I think, create, hopefully, a presentation that really speaks to everybody and allows our community to understand, you know, where we are financially, where we're going and what it looks like. So I'm just excited to, to speak to you tonight and present to you. And I'll talk more about our committee throughout, I'm sure. Next slide. So tonight, we are presenting about the financial projection process, what we went through. Well, we always take an opportunity to review our current budget and where we are. You know, we're about mid-year, so where are we at with our budget currently, just to give an idea? And then look at those financial projections for the next five years. So our financial projection process, on the next slide, as we were just talking about strategic plan, you know, we have an entire goal talking about fiscal stewardship, facility planning. This fits right in there with, you know, how do we maintain our balanced district budgets? And then how do we proactively plan for the district and the financial needs of the district in the future? So this is our CFAC, our Citizen Finance Advisory Committee, that was formed a few years ago. Really, like I said, an exciting, great group of people who come together and, and really, I think, do a great job of questioning everything, which is, I think, important. So we have a lot of great conversations. We circle back to a lot of things. We discuss things and talk about, you know, topics that we, we want to talk about in the future. And, you know, it's, it's been so much more than honestly what I even anticipated when we created this committee a couple of years ago. We have a former student, we have a teacher, some parents and community members, a board member, and then Dr. Gordon, myself. This year looked a little different than our past couple of years. So our past couple of years, you know, in our first year, we spent a lot of time learning about school finance and then doing financial projections. In our second year, we again did the financial projections. That's, that's a staple each year, but then we also, in our second year, learned about some bonds that were coming up that we were going to talk about. This third year, we were able to call on CFAC and it really was able to, to be that committee that I really had, had envisioned in that it was a committee that we were able to say, oh, the board has questions about, this year specifically about the referendum and what we can do. And we, right away, were able to pull together the group in August and say, all right, let's look at the numbers, let's make a recommendation for what we think to the board. Obviously with the board's decision in the end, but we want to be able to look through the numbers and make that recommendation. So in August, it was our first meeting of this year. We had some new members that joined, which is great. Fred is one of them. And we met to discuss those referendum options, came back then to the board with those recommendations. We then started in October with our, our normal meetings of looking at our financial projections, starting to create the presentation that you're seeing tonight. In November, we actually came together to talk more about bonds, but not the bonds we had talked about the year before, but more about what the bonds for those referendum bonds would look like. How do we want to go out? You know, we've decided as a group that we were not selling all of the bonds right away. We've, we've sold just some based on how interest works. We've talked about it. I'm not going to get too into it, but it was a great conversation, lots of learning happening at the committee and helpful to have a group of people learning about it and then making some recommendations as a group to then come to the board. December, we finalized this presentation and then we're here in January presenting. So before we jump in, and I'm not going to run through all of these, but they're definitely in the presentation, but just, we always like to have some of those definitions, make sure we know what we're talking about. Two of on, on this list, Consumer Price Index, which in an easy way, sometimes I think of it as like inflation. It's, it's definitely, we look at CPI, we look at that Consumer Price Index to help us figure out how much of an increase in revenue we can receive each year, as we are what's called a tax cap district. So both Consumer Price Index and then down towards the bottom, New Growth, is that new property value each year. Those two things have a, have an impact on how much revenue we can receive each year. So they are things we don't know in the future and so we do make assumptions. There was another one I wanted to just point out, is Fund Balance. And so that is the amount of money the district has at any specific moment in time. When we talk about fund balance and within a fiscal year, and our fiscal year is July 1st to June 30th, we're talking about fund balance at the end of the year. So on June 30th, what does our balance look like? So that it will be lower at times throughout the year and it might be higher at times, but on June 30th, what does it look like for fund balance? So our budget update, so we're going to jump right in. So hopefully these numbers, if you haven't memorized them, but maybe they look familiar, this is our budget for this year. So just a reminder that most of our revenue, most of the money we receive comes through local sources. And of that, most of that is coming through property taxes. So this is where we are, we are at as of November. It's hard for us to, you know, update instantaneously, but as of November, this is where we were at. We were looking really good in our budget. Let me explain, some of the numbers are a little bit off from last year and I'll explain why. The top one is because if you remember, a year ago, Cook County was a bit delayed on, on the tax, not as bad as two years ago, but was a bit delayed on that, when we were receiving taxes. And so we hadn't received as, as much of the property tax from the fall as we did this year. So that's why you see the percentage is actually at a better place, meaning that we've received more revenue this year. And if you look at the third line, the federal, I know that seeing a negative number in finance often means we're worried. But when you're looking at revenue and budget, negative actually means we've received more money than we budgeted. And the reason for that is that we, we've received all of our ESSER funds, which was a multi-year grant and something that we've stopped budgeting for because it was split over years. And so, but we received all that money. That grant is now over. We received that money from the federal. So that's why it's a little higher than what we budgeted. When we look at expenditures or expenses, and so this is our budget, just as a reminder, most of the budget we always talk about is salaries and benefits. But then we have other things like our purchase services, capital outlay, supplies, materials, all those things. And so on this next slide, you can see where we stand as of November with our budget for expenditures and we're doing really well for the most part. The, the big one on the top there is of course salaries and that's, you know, something we budget closely. Some of the other ones, I would just point out, like capital outlay, for example, last year, the reason it was a bit higher, in other words, we hadn't spent as much at this point last year, is because last year we had some summer construction that unfortunately took much longer than expected. There were some issues that we were working through, so we hadn't paid the vendors yet because they were still fixing some things. It was around our HVAC. So that's, that's probably the biggest number there that is an outlier. But for the most part, we're doing really well. We're on track for our budget, which is what we, we hope for and anticipate. I'm now going to hand it over to Fred, who's going to talk through our financial projection section.
Hey, everybody. Thanks for having me. I don't think I can do it as quickly as Jace has done it, but I'll, but I'll, I'll do my best here. So if we could just jump to the next slide and we'll talk about the financial projections, right? So what we just saw was basically where, where we wanted to be. Our budget's right exactly where we should be, about halfway through what we're spending and what we're collecting. That's great. And, you know, the next step is obviously looking forward and trying to make a decision about what's coming in, in future years, next year and the years beyond, right? And the whole purpose of this activity every year is, you know, an effort to be proactive and to make sure that not only do we know what we need to collect in terms of funds and how we're going to spend them, but will, will we still have money in the bank and what do our fund balances look like? It's a moment in time, projection, it's going to change. We know that. It can change, you know, internal factors. We may need to spend more. External factors may hit us where we get fewer funds, whatever, but these are projections. They're speculative on the future. They're speculative on the future. If we go to the next slide, and we talk about fund balance. I tell myself this happened when I was on the board, but I don't know for sure if I'm right about that, but I believe it is. This idea of fund balances, that the board had put a policy in place to determine how much money we're going to keep in the bank, right? And the fund balance is just that, it's just our savings account, right? And, you know, the reason we need the money in the bank is because we have to make good on payments throughout the year. We don't get the money that we need from state or local or federal sources exactly when we need it. And so we made a determination as a board that we have to keep money here so that we can pay people, that we can meet our operations expenses, maintenance expenses, and things like that, right? So the determination was that, you know, we would pick this band, and we'd say, whatever our annual operating budget was going to be, we would try to keep 40% of those funds in the bank in case we needed them, for the reasons I just said. We don't go higher than that. We set a top band of 50% and a lower band of 30%. And so we're trying to hit that number all the time. And so part of this forward-looking process is, what's our future budget's going to look like based on revenue and other factors, but also, are we keeping money in the bank? It's an important thing for us to do, just like it is for all of us, probably, to manage our household budgets in a similar way. If we jump ahead to the next slide, some of the assumptions we put in place for this forward-looking model, we split it into two categories. One, obviously, is revenue, right, the money that we're taking in, and then our expenses. And as you might guess, in all ways, we're very conservative in the way we do our estimating. Our budget is, I think it's $35 million for this year, and it's always in that ballpark. That's not a lot of money, and small mistakes can add up quickly. So we do a really great job, and by we, I mean, this guy behind me does a really good job of making sure that we're able to be solvent every year. But also, as we're making these forward projections, the assumptions that we include here are also very conservative. There's a couple interesting ones here. One is around, let's look at the revenue column first, right? We plan on, you know, $2 million annually in new growth, right, and no more than that. I think if we look at, I have a note here. That 2 million number is fairly conservative. When we look at what the EAV was over the last 13 years, like it averages out to somewhere around $5 million per year. So that's one conservative estimate. The other is the CPI number of 3% for this year and next year at 2.5%. That CPI number, also, we've got a 13-year history of looking at that and what that number looks like as well, and so we always estimate on the low end of that. We're not assuming any change in federal and state support. We're assuming taxes are collected like they should be, and that our interest rates on our investments remain flat. And from an expense perspective, we keep something in there, $2 million annually for facility maintenance per year. That's a number we'll see later on, may not necessarily be as necessary going forward once we have a brand-new Lincoln Middle School, and once we make some improvements to Westbrook, right? We've got some stability here and at Lyons Park as well, so that number is consistent across the estimates for the coming years, but it may be conservative. We do assume that we have to staff now this full-day kindergarten, and those numbers are in the projections for the out-years, and as well as anticipated retirements. And the last one is increased expenditures, not connected to EAP, that we didn't change our expenses based on any projections for CPI. So if we look ahead to the next slide, and we actually talk about the things that we didn't include in terms of assumptions was, you know, those savings. As I mentioned that just a few minutes ago, that we're probably going to have some savings from Lincoln. That's good news. That's money we might not spend in those out-years. There's some bad news items on here, maybe, right? There might be a decrease in federal funding. That's a storyline. We don't know about that, but we're just assuming we're going to receive our federal funds. It's a small part of our budget, but we're assuming we're going to get it. And that this really has nothing to do, obviously, with the referendum, right? So the revenues and the expenses from a referendum are a separate box of money. It's not part of this future projection. That's a separate line item. If we go to the next slide, I think we can actually see this I chart that we've seen, probably many of you have seen it before. I'll let Jason come back and talk about some things in a moment here, but, you know, if you look at this, you've got these three bands, the blue, the yellow, and the red, where the blue shows us at 50% of our fund balance, 40% is at yellow and red, I think it's red, red is 30%, I'm colorblind, but I've been told those are the colors. And if you look at where we are this year, the budget year, FY '24 and '25, you'll see that we're right around 50%. That's good news. And so while we're, again, aiming at a 40% fund balance, 40% of our money in the bank, we're actually doing better this year. That's great, and again, that's a testament to the work that's done every year in the budgeting process that we just discussed, right? Are we spending the money and collecting the money that we said we would and could and controlling our expenses? It puts us in a good situation. That's good, because you start to see in the out-years here, with the introduction of full-day kindergarten, with changes to our certified staff contract changing, and some other things in the out-years, our budget's going to increase. Hopefully, our revenues increase, but based on the projection and the assumptions that we just discussed, our fund balances will decrease a bit. But this slide always looks like this every year, and so we have to revisit it every year and not get too concerned about those out-years. Again, it's this future look, and it's really important to look out to the future and know that, are we going to be able to do the things we just signed up for? We just went and collected all this money from the community. Can we put these teachers in place? Can we do the things we want to do? And the answer is yes. We're going to be okay. And we're going to have to continue to manage it in those out-years and make sure that, you know, that we're collecting the revenues we need, that we're managing our expenses like we always do, and that we have money in the bank. Even if we get to that point in some out-year, you know, what does it say, school year '29, the fall of '29, where we start to fall below that 30%, there's levers that can be put in place. And the next slide, I think, is the one I want to give back to you, Jace, that kind of shows some other assumptions that could be put in place to sort of show different scenarios, right? There's different levers that can be pulled in terms of the way we do our budgeting and estimating, but I think, I'll let you cover that because I know you want to talk about that.
Sure. Excellent. So, yeah, so, you know, each year, we, when we talk about financial projections, we do present one projection. We look at our best assumption, and we present that. However, I know that we wanted to look at, you know, what happens if some of these assumptions look a little different? And so, you know, expenditures are one thing, right? Because we can talk about how we want to spend money, and that's a yearly conversation, and it can talk through, and that's talk through staffing plan or construction, you know, different ways that we can talk about how much we're spending and what does that look like. Revenue's one that's a little bit more out of our control. And so we wanted to, on this chart, I know it's very busy and it's a lot of numbers, but the goal here was to kind of show, well, what happens if some of those levers look different? So you can see on the left, the base scenario. So that's everything that Fred just talked about. It's our base scenario of what we think. That's the chart on the previous slide. The second column there, the alternate scenario one, what we did there is we said, we're going to keep everything the same, but what if CPI looked a little different? What if it was a little bit lower those, the final four years? So instead of 2.5%, it's 2%. CPI is tough, and even when we look at this, our assumptions are flat. It's all 2.5% or 2%. And we know just by looking at historical CPI that it does vary each year. You know, it's been five for a couple of years. It's actually been higher, but we get the max of five. This past year just came in, it's 2.9. The year before was 3.4. So it does go over. It's been as low as 0.1 at one year. So it can be all over the place, but we said, well, what if it lowered to 2%? What would that look like? And I would jump down just to that bottom number. So you can see, you know, in our base scenario, we're looking at about 11.5, just under 11.6 million, as our fund balance. And then you can see what happens with CPI lowering, you know, it lowers to 10.3. It's a difference, no question. You know, those are definitely dollars up there that we're losing. It's not, you know, it's not bringing us below zero. It's not, you know, we're close to zero, so we know that, but it does have an impact. You can then see on alternate scenario two, we again kept everything the same, but then we said, well, you know, as Fred talked about, you know, that 2 million for new growth might be pretty conservative, and so what if it was 6 million each year? I don't think it's going to be 6 million each year, but we said, like, what does that look like? Just to kind of give people, you all as well as community, an idea of like, what does that mean? And again, now you can see that instead of 11.5, it's going up to 12.8, 12.9, you know, so there is the difference. Again, you know, the odds that one of those things will happen, no, it's going to be a lot of different levers moving, some up, some down. That's how it works, and that's why we look at this each year. But I thought, and the community, or sorry, the committee, thought, you know, this was a good way, I think, of at least representing how those levers can impact our projections. And so, you know, when we look at that previous slide, we obviously know that the further out you go, the less reliable those numbers are, and that's why each year, we continue to do this and just go out another year and make sure we're in a good place. And if we start seeing that we're not in a good place, then absolutely, we need to start looking at what we can do either to increase revenue, decrease expenditures, or So some key takeaways, I know we talked a lot about both of those previous slides, but really, I think the district financial projection, I'm just going to read it here, but, you know, for the next few years, keep fund balances within the board policy guidelines. And then with so many assumptions, we just, we need to continue to watch it, watch it closely. I, of course, am, and then I bring it back to the committee, and we continue to meet and look at it, you know, from year to year. So this is our committee. I do want to say thank you. Jeff Ling is here, and Jeff and Fred both joined the committee this year, and so we don't make first-year people come to the meetings. We ask everybody, but it was a busy year. I think I had a lot of people that just unfortunately couldn't make it tonight. But I want to say again, this is an amazing committee of people who, you know, volunteer, donate their time, come to meetings, and really come asking questions, wanting to learn more, wanting to understand more. And so much of this, when I look back over the last couple of years, actually, when I look back three years ago, before the committee started, at what my presentation looked like, and I look at it now, it's so different, and it's so helpful to have people just asking those questions and probing a little bit more to understand in order for me to then understand exactly what needs to be out there for everybody to see. And with that, I think the next slide, is any questions?
I just want to say also, Keith Schaefer is here, and Member Chung, too. So, right, yeah.
Sorry, Keith, I'm sorry. I didn't see you come in. I apologize. So, thank you. You're looking that way.
Thank you so much, Jason, and to our committee, those of you that could make it here tonight, for sharing that information with us. Are there any questions from the board? Go ahead, Jen.
I have two. I think the first one is, aside from teachers, well, thank you, first of all. Thank you to you, and thank you to the whole committee for being here and for all of your service. I've certainly learned a lot about finance over the last four years, so I appreciate that. But I think my first question is just, aside from teachers in that upcoming, you know, '27, '28, as we start to build new Lincoln and we have Westbrook, are there any other additional expenses that we should be thinking about or things that you're seeing as additional things that might need to be added at the time?
No, we, so we've built in this year, so that's something additional. So I would say, for example, we built in this year funds for furniture. We have a learning spaces committee that's meeting. We know that there's going to be big furniture costs with the new Lincoln, but we have a goal with that committee to really outfit all classrooms and learning spaces with new furniture. We don't know the timeline for that. It'll depend on money, which we're figuring out, but we know that. But I have budgeted it this year, so it's not something new that would come into play. So when we look at projections, if it's already budgeted, we just continue to, we'll raise it up a little bit because we know expenses go up a little bit, but the budget's already there. So, no, and things like, even like the $2 million for our capital needs and our facilities, same thing. Like, we have it there. It'll be different needs each year, we know, but one thing, of course, is all of those needs for Lincoln have gone away to the referendum, and so we're able to address some of these other things.
Awesome. Thank you. That's helpful. And then the other question I have is, I have some inside knowledge of this, given that the former student is my child. But I think as we get ready to add a student to the school board, I'd love to hear just, like, what is the value of having kind of all those different levels from the student perspective, you know, through the parents and committees, and just thinking about, like, what that means to have that voice in particular on the board?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I think in any committee, the more stakeholders, different types of stakeholders you have, the better it is for just the input. And so I would start first by just saying, really, I value the fact that there are people on the committee who will come in right away and say, I know nothing about finance. And I've said, I think I've said it before at this, you know, at the podium, that those sometimes are the people that really offer the most to the presentation because they help us to say, all right, I didn't understand that. Great, we need to fix it. Because what we want is to present something that everybody understands. It's not just people who understand finance. I think there are times where we do have questions that might be specific about schooling and how it works, and that could help. This committee, for the most part, is more about finance, and so I think it's just having just a variety of different people. But anytime that we can have somebody who might have an interest in this or want to do this later in life, or just want to learn more because they're interested, great, come on in. So I think it's really just, I value, it's not because they're a former student or a current student or anything. I really just value the fact that there's so many people with so many just different backgrounds and different understandings and look at things differently. And so I will say, our former student, he isn't shy in offering exactly, you know, he has lots of opinions when it comes to, like, this is what it should look like, or this is what we should include. But when we even talk about numbers, you know, he's right in there going, going, I don't know, that seems like a little too much. So it's great. It's great. They might be nodding their heads behind me. I'm not sure.
They are.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. I'm glad I'm right on. So, yeah.
No, that's helpful. And I will say, on his front, just speaking as his mom, you know, I think I've seen him, like, he's excited because, you know, he said, like, people will talk about how long they've been on the board, and I can say, I've been on it for three years. And that's exciting to him, and to your point, you know, that is something that really interests him, and he's remained on the board because it continues to interest him as a future, you know, career path. He's now in the business classes at Prospect, so he has taken this knowledge and he continues to use it. So I appreciate all of you for welcoming him into that space and making him feel like he is a valued part of that committee. I think it would have been easy for him to be like, they're not listening to me, like, I don't have any part in this. He is an outspoken young man. But, you know, I think he definitely has gotten a lot from it, so I just wanted to say that, too. So thank you for welcoming my son to the committee, too.
Great. I could just add one more thing, like, the idea of... But I agree with everything you just said, but I do think, like, in terms of, like, adding people to, whether it's the board or committees, like, that idea of inclusion and opening this world up to people so that they can learn at a young age and start to understand the value of, you know, their own voice and how they can make an impact, it's critical. They wouldn't do it otherwise, and you get to be adults like us, and you just come stumbling in here and try to figure it out as you go, you know? If you can somehow, you know, raise a different generation of people that care about this, I mean, it's all to, it's to our benefit, right? So, yeah, and he's a great kid.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It wasn't really about getting compliments, or am I just trying to get the, because I do think, like, it's something that's really important to me to have that student voice, and I just think, I have seen him really grow, and I really appreciated that, and like, he has said how much he is valued being a part of that space. So I also wanted to say thank you to you. So thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Vicki. I didn't, no questions.
I just had a couple of comments. So first, thank you so much, Fred and Jason, for presenting, and yeah, Jeff and Keith for attending as well and being part of the CFAC. So as you were reminiscing, Jason, I, too, was remin, I remember when you first came and you were talking about the version of CFAC at your previous place and what the vision could be, and then just, yeah, three years later, look at it now, and it really is amazing and impressive, and, you know, yeah, so much of it due to your leadership and your vision for it. So thank you so much, Jason, for making it happen. And I guess also, Fred, thank you so much for presenting, and a couple of things that you pointed out I thought were so important. And the first is just that the budget is a moment in time, so I love that you kind of stress that. It's just capturing one moment, and then also how conservative, you know, that we're being, even to the point where on one of the slides, it showed some of the assumptions, some of the things that are not included in the budget because we wanted to be conservative. So just, yeah, hats off to you, Fred, for, yeah, being willing to present, so thanks.
Anyone else? Eileen?
And mine's just also a comment, excuse my voice. I really appreciate all that you guys have done. I really appreciated also what you guys did with the referendum and bringing back those options to us. It was great that you guys were able to look into it and gave us that option, and I think that helped make the community say yes to our referendum, so thank you for that.
Chris?
Well, thank you, Fred and Jason, again. I think CFAC is really a wonderful thing, and I'm so glad we have it. I mean, we've already heard in, what, meetings that 45 minutes old, and we've already heard student voice at Fairview and community involvement with CFAC, and a great example of how, you know, all those voices are helping to make our district stronger. So it's really awesome. I am curious for anyone listening who might want to become a member of CFAC, how might they do that?
Actually, that's interesting. I was going to end that way, but, no, it's perfect. So, no, because I was, and I apologize again, Keith Schaefer is also one of our first-year CFAC members, so, and Board Member Chung has been on since the beginning, so three years. But anybody can reach out to me, and there is no test or anything like that. We just let you know the secret...
No secret handshake?
I was just going to say, we let you know the secret handshake, and then you can come. But no, we start meeting, you know, we, CFAC typically, unless needed, will start meeting in the fall and go till January. And then we take a little bit of a break unless needed, but we'll come back in the fall. But if anyone's interested, reach out to me, and we'll add you to the email list, and we usually have dinner as we meet, so it's great.
Awesome. I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So I really love the model, you know, it just makes me recall one of my favorite mathematical sayings, that all models are wrong, some are useful. I really liked the sensitivity analysis you did on the revenue side, looking at different factors. I'm curious, did you look at that on the expense side also? Did you say, well, if our expenses go up or down by different amounts, what does that do to me?
I did. But honestly, like, when it comes to expenditures, that's something we, as a district, really can decide, whereas revenue is something that's out of our hands. So if we start to say, oh, look, the graph and the way it's going is actually where we are four years from now, then that's something we, as a district, are going to sit back, and we won't wait four years from now. But that is something we, as a district, then would sit back and just say, we need to look at expenditures, whether it's looking at supplies, whether it's looking at staffing. We hope we never get to that point, but that's something that we would talk about. But that can really, there are so many different levers that we can pull there. So I, we could easily say, yes, let's bring down expenditures, but it could be, it could just be a general, we have to bring expenditures down by $300,000, let's figure that out. So it would just be pulling it out of the model, not in specifically one place. And so, so I thought, and that's what we talked about at CFAC, is that revenue is probably the better place to look at because it's so, it's out of our control. So expenditures, I think we could, we could easily say, yeah, let's pull it out here and see how that impacts over the years, because it will compound if we pull something out and don't do it again. You know, if we decide we're not going to, I don't know, buy recess equipment, bad example, but, and we don't, you know, like, it will lower, of course, so we will bring it down, but we really thought the revenue side was the part that's real, more out of our control.
Understood. I want to ask about, I think it was, forget if it was you or Fred, you talked about the $2 million per year annual maintenance and how, well, we might be able to reduce that with the new Lincoln. Just so I'm clear on this, that 2 million that we typically budget is capital outlay, right? That's not maintenance and O and M, that's actual capital improvements.
Correct.
I guess, to me, that's not the same as maintenance. Maintenance is an O and M expense, right? Whereas capital is, I'm making an actual improvement to my facilities somehow. I just want to make sure when we talk about that, yes, the new Lincoln, we all expect will allow our operating expenses of the building to go down, that isn't necessarily tied to that 2 million capital budget.
Correct, correct. We anticipate that the 2 million, it has been 2 million for the last couple of years, and I do anticipate it will continue. Some of that 2 million right now is earmarked for...
That was going to be my next point.
For, yeah, so we, over the next three years, had said that of the 2 million, one and a half will go towards construction, $500,000 stays to help support, really, Lions Park and Fairview during those couple of years, because Westbrook and Lincoln are being addressed through the referendum. After that, we can always reassess. I do anticipate that the 2 million will stay. How we utilize it, though, will look different because most of the things, at least the big-ticket items that were on the list that really need to get done, were Lincoln, were Lincoln-specific.
I hear you. I just want to make sure we don't forget Fairview and Lions Park.
No, that's why, that's why, yep. We actually was over at both Fairview and Lions Park today, talking about summer construction with our...
Especially that new Fairview playground, right?
It's on there, it's on there. Not this summer, but it's on there.
But no, I really appreciate the work, and I really like the thought you guys put into the modeling. And I guess the only other question I would ask is, you know, looking at this, do you ever go back, now that you've been at this for a few years, and look at your models from, like, two years ago, and where we ended up, and say, okay, this turned out right, maybe this assumption wasn't quite... I guess where I'm getting at is, are you able to kind of refine your model even, even better as you go because now you have some real data from what used to be just a...
So I would say yes and no. Yes, I go back and look for sure. Yes, I look at it. When you add in the sentence about refine, that's hard, because I would say, like, for example, last year, the last two years, we've come in, our budget's been great on expenditure side, we've come in over budget and revenue, meaning we've received more than we expected. And there's reasons for that. You know, two years ago, a lot of that CPPRT tax, you know, that really went up. Last year, investments, and there was something else. But last year, you know, we had, so there's always things we can pinpoint to, and so the problem is, I can't count on that the following year. And so, and so because we can't count on that, I don't know if refining, if there was something where it was like, oh, yeah, I anticipated this, and then it was way off, and I could have known that at the beginning of the year, that's something different. These are usually ones where, at the end of the year, it's like, oh, yeah, interest rates changed, but we didn't anticipate that. You know, even asking, you know, people around, our financial advisors, they didn't know that either. So, you know, so I think that...
I don't think anybody knows that at this point.
Yeah, yeah. If you did, we'd be rich. But yeah, so I think that, you know, so that's the hard part, is, yes, I mean, I look back, and we do want to refine if possible, but I think it's, so many of the times, it's something we don't know in the fall, you know, what it's going to look like at the end of the year.
Okay. Awesome. Well, great job on this, and thank you. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Anyone else, questions or comments? Corinne?
I want to just express our gratitude again for all the work that you guys have been doing, the time that you've set aside to help us. And I'm going to echo Eileen's comment about the work that you did coming back with the referendum bond recommendations. I won't say that the whole process was easy, but that made me really feel informed and that we were making a really good decision for the community as to which one, because we already had the feedback from the community. So I congratulate you on that, and it was a really vital piece of what we were doing. The other one is just a little bit of feedback about the presentation and the presentation content. The alternate scenarios was very helpful. It provided some additional context and some needed context around the initial chart that has the, the dot chart, sorry. Putting around, like, where our variables could be and what we could possibly do, it reminded me very much of the bond recommendation that you guys had made and having that perspective between the two. So I would love to see that in the future, and thank you.
Pam, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. And I think what I appreciate the most after talking with some of my neighbors is that the committee is comprised of so many community members. I think that's really important. It gives us, as a board, more credibility, that it's not just coming from us, but it's coming from the neighbors' peers, and I appreciate that. I do have a question. Is there anyone on the committee who has a CPA? And if not, is that, did that change anything? I'm asking, I'm asking because I was approached by a neighbor.
Sure. I can tell you, there's definitely people that work in finance. I don't, I can't speak right now off the top of my head unless anybody else knows. We have somebody whose wife is a CPA. Maybe we'll bring her along.
I share everything with our meetings. She's asking questions, and I'm asking follow-ups, so, yeah.
There's definitely people who come in that work in finance, work in the business world, and know finance, but I can't speak if there's somebody who has a CPA. I don't, I wouldn't want to speak without knowing that.
And it doesn't seem to me that that would have made a difference, because if it's someone who's in finance, and that's their profession, they're lending us their expertise.
Correct. And I would tell you, actually, that what I've heard back from some of the people who are in finance is, school finance is very different than the finance they know. And so that's why, actually, that first year, we spent a whole meeting just talking about school finance and educating people, and it's, you know, something we need to share because it does look very different. You know, we will get questions on that, well, why can't you just invest, or why can't you spend like this? And it does look different.
And one of the, one of the questions that I get all the time is, why don't the districts consolidate? Have them all consolidate? We don't need so many districts. And it's really, it's a complicated explanation as to why we don't. So yes, and that's part of the financial complications.
Yeah, and I think, not to speak for you, but from what I understand, the purpose of CFAC was not so much to gather pre-existing experts and have them speak into our financial situation. It was really to educate people who are interested about the nuances of school finance, being that they are so different from what you typically, you know, are familiar with in the business world. And then have those people with that knowledge be able to say, oh, you know, this is maybe something we should pursue, or this is something we should look at. And I, you know, to the commentary of everyone, I think that really came across with the recommendations from the referendum. So thank you all again so much for being here tonight and for your feedback and perspective and your service in terms of meeting over the past couple of months. Thank you so much. We'll move ahead to our Building Brighter Futures update.
Okay, well, Jason's kind of transitioning to the limo that is waiting for them, just kidding. No, just teasing, that's not a good joke. We just, we've been talking about the, you know, just all the exciting work this year from the referendum passing and being approved by voters, and all of the precipitating, I think, factors that helped build confidence and transparency. And one of the things that we remain committed to in our regular meetings is keeping updates from our Building Brighter Future, Building Brighter Futures mission, that we are now, you know, titling the work that is afforded by the public's successful passing of the referendum. So Jason is going to talk about some of the things that have happened in the last month since our last meeting, and he is like the Energizer Bunny. He is on a mission, he's a man on a mission, and I'm excited for you to hear some of the things that are underfoot.
Absolutely. Do you have the slideshow? You can put the rope, thank you, I think. Perfect, awesome. So just wanted to update you, so this is something that we've looked at before. So we've been working a lot. I was saying earlier that I think I'm at Lincoln every day, if not pretty much, as we have lots of meetings. We just finished, and maybe, I think the next slide, can you go to the next slide? I think that's phase one. Yes, perfect. So we, at the top, you can see, we're doing a lot of different things that were in phase one schematic design, we're really taking a lot of just input at this point. And today was our last focus group. So we had staff thought surveys, we had parents' surveys, we had student surveys, community surveys, and then we started doing focus groups. And so we've done focus groups with every group of teachers today. We met with library and rural languages. Those were our last two to meet with. And so we also met with students right before, I think we talked about it at the last board meeting, we met with students through the Principal Advisory Council, and that was great, really interesting to hear back from them. And I think I shared last time, they were very consistent that we need bigger hallways. That was the first thing each group mentioned. And then when we met with that focus group of teachers the same day, they said the same thing first. So it was pretty funny. We, this past week, if you can go to the next slide, we visited some middle schools, I think it was last week. And so these are just some pictures, which start to get you hopefully excited about what we can start hopefully to see in a couple of years, but great to visit other schools. Everyone who took us around, what's interesting is, I think they're more interested in telling us what didn't work, which is great. So we get to hear about, yeah, this didn't work, and this was, you know, this is the idea behind it, but it didn't, it doesn't get used or whatever. So it really helps us, our teachers were able to see around there. So we brought our steering committee, so we've put together a committee, and it represents, you know, we have PE and fine arts and all the different groups that are represented, and we bring them around. And now we're meeting with them to kind of go through some of those next steps. It's just a smaller group that can then help us move along with the architects. And so we, our next step is the steering committee's meeting next week, and they're going to start meeting pretty regularly to meet with the architects and kind of push it along and hope that we have more to share with you, hopefully at the next meeting, at least more of a visual at that point. But that's it. And then in the next slide, what we're excited about is, next week, we start with Westbrook. And so we had warned Westbrook staff, we said, be excited, but don't be excited yet because we're going to first work with Lincoln, and then we're going to work with Westbrook. And so, starting next week, I'm going to join Principal Heffner, and we're going to present to the staff at their staff meeting about what the plan is, which will look very similar to Lincoln. It's going to be a lot of focus groups, we're going to meet with students, we're going to do surveys, I'm excited for the meeting with students part, and we're going to be doing surveys, we're going to do some visits, some tours. It's going to be great. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see it looks very similar to what it looked like for phase one of Lincoln. And so it'll kick off next week, and it'll go for the next couple of months or so into March. And so we're excited, it's, we're just, we're moving along, we're talking about everything from where a gym should be to where outlets should be and everything in between. So it's just an exciting opportunity. And I think one thing I didn't mention last time, and I just want to make sure, is that one of the focus groups we met with for Lincoln was also, we met with the Fire and Police Department. And so it was great to hear Fire talk, you know, more about some of the code and fire code and things like that with the architects. Police, we were talking, obviously, more about safety and security and what that could look like. And so it was great just to get that kind of their input. It was early, I think the Fire Department kept saying, yeah, you know, until you have plans, you know, there's not much we can talk about, but it was actually, you know, rather be early, and they gave us a great ideas on what we need to do as we start planning, and then we'll come back to them. So just, lots of, lots of great things going on, and definitely I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Eileen?
Just one simple one. Are you going to do any more middle school tours? I was ill last week, so I couldn't go. I'm just curious.
Got it.
If we're not, we're not.
I'm not sure. I think, I think they were, they were great. I think we might, one thing we might look at is doing something a little more specific. So, for example, do we take some science teachers and go just to look at, like, some science labs, or do we take PE and look at just, because I think, I mean, I think we got a good idea from what we saw of what we liked and what we didn't like. And I think, you know, there are also, you know, we're definitely looking at, like, lots of pictures and things like that. So there, there is something about being in the building, but there is something about, you know, looking at pictures and just getting ideas of how to design it. So I think it's just helpful. I think the hardest part we all have is, A, what I tell the Lincoln teachers is, they've done an amazing job of doing a great job educating within the constraints of the building. And I think when we meet a focus group, sometimes they're stuck in, you know, this is what we've done because that's what they had to do. And so we've, I think, visiting and talking and just, I always say, think big, which gets to be expensive sometimes, but, but you want, you know, to think outside the box and think big and think, you know, what can it look like, and how do we educate differently? And, you know, we educate in a certain way because that's what the building prescribes. And so we wanted to say, no, the building is going to help support how we want to educate. And so I think people are getting there. It starts off slow. We talk a lot about storage at the beginning, and then we get to, no, 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 this is what no, no, this is what classrooms and learning spaces could really look like to help support the education of students.
That's great. Thank you. Vicki?
Thanks. Thank you for the update, Jason. I was curious. So last, I think our last meeting, you shared a little bit about how deliberate we're being in terms of reaching out to the neighbors around, you know, those who live around Lincoln, just to talk them through very early, what's the best way to communicate with you, what are some fears? And I don't know if that's already finished, but how is that process going? And are they sharing things that have maybe changed our plans or our communication? I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, good question. And we're going to do the same for Westbrook, so I should have mentioned that. But yeah, at Lincoln, so we've gotten back feedback. The questions were mainly about, talk to us about any fears you have about the construction. So a lot of it is things that wouldn't come into play until construction starts, you know, how early it starts, what's the routes, things like that. And so most of that are things that, right now, we're not talking about, but we will talk about with our construction management, you know, company and work with it there. It's open, so people can fill it out, you know, whenever they'd like, and they can always give us feedback, and they have ways to get to, you know, to let us know anything as well. So if they think of something, you know, one night, they can always fill it out. But we go through that feedback. We've had it. We've put it together. We've shared it with our architects as well.
And then once we, you know, as Jason mentioned, as we have some updates, one of the questions that people were asked to fill out, do you want to be part of regular updates from us? So what, you know, we were collecting their contact information, and we'll be, you know, directly providing them emails or texts, and then also posting things on our website. So we actually did get some coverage from, I believe it was Daily Herald. And one of our neighbors reached out, having read that article, saying, I never got the survey that you was referencing. And it was wonderful, because we were able to say, you know, you were actually someone that we mailed it to. So either whether it got lost in the mail or what have you. But we were grateful that that coverage helped draw attention to our website and our, you know, expectation to be able to nurture these relationships. So luckily, we were able to contact and talk with that neighbor, and hopefully they'll continue to spread the word too within their communities. But, you know, so yeah.
And then we do have a plan. I'm not sure on the timeline, but we do have a plan to then go, you know, have an open house for the community, have them come in, see what the proposal looks like or the draft plans look like, because we do want that feedback as well. Sure.
Chris?
Thank you for that update, Jason. Just in, you know, we talked about, I think Vicki brought up, that one of the wonderful things about this whole process is just the way we're partnering with all the stakeholders we have. Curious, have there been any further discussions with the village at all? I mean, they're obviously an important partner with us on this. Anything there regarding, you know, where Lincoln's going to go and two-story building, three-story building? Has that happened?
Not yet. We met with the village and our architects and our construction management company, November? I think in November. And so the marching orders kind of from there is we know what meetings we need to go to. So we've built a timeline now to make sure that we're living up to their timeline, so that we can have everything done in time. But until we have an idea of what the building is going to look like, which is coming next after the schematic design, after all the inputs have been given, as soon as we have that, then we can go back to them. Right now, we have nothing to show them.
Awesome. Okay.
Sure.
Regarding the focus groups, how are the STR team or the team members involved in the, are they there?
They run it.
Okay, they run it. Oh, perfect. Because I was thinking, something, I think you said that, everyone wants bigger hallways.
Yes.
But it makes me think, you know, is that really the root cause solution, right? I mean, the problem really is flow. It's not, I just want to make sure we don't jump to, well, we got to have bigger hallways, when really that may not be the answer. It may be that we just need to design the layout so that traffic can flow better with
Absolutely.
The same size hallways.
Yeah. No, there's a, we definitely have, there are some hallways that are for sure too small currently. I could tell you that. And there's some that are fine. And it also depends on, do we have lockers on both sides of the hall? Because that does impact. One of the schools we went to last week tried, I think they had to add more lockers, so they, not everywhere, but for the most part, have lockers only on one side of the hallway everywhere. So you don't have kids, because all of a sudden, that just closes the hallway even more. So absolutely, no, STR runs the focus groups. I'm there. I'm in everyone. Principal Larson's been at everyone. But they run it. They take all the feedback. They write it up. They give it to, they give it back to us. And then actually, Mr. Larson puts it in his newsletter for staff to read. So everyone's able to get feedback on everyone else's, and it's all right there. And now we just have to go in and put it all to a picture of what it looks like.
Right. Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I was going to say, Alan at the South Middle School tour, they have really big hallways, and everybody's like impressed with the big hallways. And he's like, well, we got big hallways, and they have smaller classrooms. So he did, he knows. He's like, you guys are used to this, these really small hallways.
Right. I would argue hallways are, you want them to be only as big as they need to be, right? Because they are taking valuable real estate from learning spaces and socializing spaces and all those things that we really like.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, if you think about it right now, one of the worst hallways we have is the one back in the 500 wing, because you have sixth graders at lockers while seventh or eighth graders go to science. And so the idea of having a core, you know, grade level on floors, so now you don't have another grade level walking through. And that's what we're trying to keep, but yeah.
And I'm sure our architects get that. I just, I got a little worried when I said bigger hallways, because I'm not sure that's a great idea.
Well, I think, I think what's interesting is that, right, the kids will say bigger hallways, because that's what they know. And the architects are like, yep, we need to work on flow. You know, in their mind, they're going, yep, flow, which might be bigger hallways, but also might be how we have people flow through.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I'm just very excited to notice, you know, in terms of what we're doing at Lincoln, right, and doing tours of other schools and brainstorming sort of what a new Lincoln could look like, it did not occur to me that we get to do the same thing with Westbrook as far as what like the kindergarten space could look like. So I'm super excited for that opportunity to go and, you know, just check out, you know, little kid learning spaces. I think that'll be really great. And I would recommend, if at all possible, as you're doing the focus groups with the youngsters, if we can maybe see some drawings, right, have them sketch out some of their ideas. What did they want their school to look like? I think that'd be really amazing. So anyway, thank you very much for that. I think we're still with you for the transportation bids.
You just get to hear from me all night. I apologize for the length of the meeting. So as you hopefully know, our transportation contract for this current year is up June 30th. It was a two-year contract, but this is the second year, or two-year extension, I should say. And so we did go out to bid, and I know you saw the bid documents prior to going out to bid. So we went out to bid in December. We had six companies come to our pre-bid meeting. It was a mandatory pre-bid meeting. And then we had three companies bid. So that was great. And then based on the bids, I would tell you that one of the companies financially just wasn't close, was pretty high. And the other two were very close. And so then we looked at the entirety of the bid, reference checks, everything. And I would tell you that I would, I'm excited to recommend you tonight, Grand Prairie, as our next transportation partner. They, the bid was great, and dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's, but also the reference checks that I did were really, you know, glowing. They are a company that used to work in the district, so know the district. They also work with 214 and 26, and you probably see Grand Prairie buses all around. And so financially, next year, it actually would work out. And everything's an estimate, so we base it on, you know, what, how many routes we had this year, and then we just look at next year. It might change, but, you know, just in order to compare apples to apples. And so they came in, it'd actually be a reduction in cost next year of 1.65%. And then it would increase over the next four years after that. But I'm excited about the idea of having a five-year contract, being locked into five years, helps with our financial projections as we know, when we know costs that will be coming up. Dave Armbricht is here from Grand Prairie, and so I was going to introduce him, and he was going to introduce some of his team and maybe answer any questions. I can answer any questions, or he can answer any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Jason Kayes and Dr. Mary Gore and the Board of 57. I really appreciate the opportunity to give the school bus a voice. I can't say too often we get it, but we get excited when we do, because we are the first person your students see and the last one that drops them off, and we are coming for your children. Literally, we are coming for your children. But to keep it to the basketball theme we got going tonight, I do have a team of members behind me I'd like to introduce. So give me your best Vanna Wave or something like that. We have Jason Olberg, who is the manager at Grand Prairie Transit. I'm really proud to say that he's a taxpayer, and all his kids graduated from 214, rock on, and now they serve our country, which is really cool. And then we have Nikki Didier. She just got married, so I'm working on that name. And then we have John Kanoki. He is one of our owners and our vice president. So, and then we have John, Nikki's husband, here with us supporting. And we have, I have to say this, my lovely wife, Donna, who is a Golden Apple teacher. Yes, I'm proud of that. And then myself, I'm Dave Armbricht, and I have been working in this company for 24 years. I don't know how that's possible. I just turned 21, so I don't get it. But Cook, Illinois has been around for a really long time, and we run about 3,000 buses. We're the largest family-owned company in Illinois. That's a transportation and school bus-related company. And we have served your district and many of your feeder districts into 214, and it's something we're extremely proud of. We have a bunch of different names out there. So we have a bunch of subsidiaries. That's how we run it. Our owner, John Benish, decided a long time ago, when he would earn the right to serve a community, if they liked their current provider, we'd put that name right on the side of the bus if that's what they wanted, because that's what the community was used to seeing. So that is one of the reasons why you'll see River Trails, still says River Trails right on the side of the bus. So it's kind of a cool concept. I had the cool opportunity of serving Lincoln Way area special education, as well as Lincoln Way High School as a CSBO, and I've worked for this company. So it's kind of neat to see it from both sides of the fence, because we have our challenges, right? And the school bus is such an important part of the day, and it's one that gets your day started for learning purposes. So we're excited to have this potential opportunity, and we will do our due diligence. It's something we've done a lot. We feel very accomplished in this area, and we'd love to serve this community once again. And I will entertain any questions you might have.
Well, thank you so much for coming out. It's such an honor to have so many of you here tonight. Are there any questions? Jen?
I don't know that I have a question, but it's the first time we've seen our bus company come. So I really do appreciate you showing up tonight and really, you know, sharing a little bit about your process and really thinking about like what it means to be a bus company. And you're right, you're the first person they see in the morning and the last person sees them in the afternoon. And like, having, I mean, I know how important bus drivers were to my own students as they got on those buses. And one of them even dropped off my daughter's iPad when she, or her Chromebook when she left it on the bus at one point. And so I really appreciate you being out here tonight. So I just want to say that.
Well, thank you very much. The school bus driver is one of the coolest positions. We, most of our people are accomplished at something in their career, and then they come back and just help their community. It is, you could just sit and listen when they're having their coffee, and you will learn something. It's really awesome. It's like a master's class. It's great.
Any other questions, Eileen?
Just echoing Jen, kudos for even staying this late and holding out for the, to this part of the meeting. So appreciate it. And it's nice to see you guys come out. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for having us.
Yeah. I mean, yes, amazing. Thank you so much for coming. This is, yeah, just amazing that you, thank you for coming. I did have a, just a general question. So assuming that you've been to other, you know, maybe school board meetings to introduce yourself or to reengage with your current clients, what are questions that you would get? That, I can't even think of something at this point to ask you. So just curious, do you get questions or it's just a?
I would say the hottest question coming out of COVID is, do you have enough drivers? I would say that's the biggest topic. But we are very fortunate that that is something that, you know, being a family-owned business, I would think one of the proudest things I have is our owner is John Benish Jr., and he drives a bus for us. He comes down and says, can I jump in a bus today and drive one? And he just hasn't forgot his roots. And I think that's really something cool and something I take pride in. Being a part of, I'm not a family member myself, but I feel like I'm the prodigal son, you know, like I've come home. And, because I left for a little while to go be a CSBO. And it just, it's a very cool environment. But mostly, they're usually directly related to a issue someone maybe has had with a past experience, because school busting is such an interesting beast, because if one school bus driver makes a mistake in the news, it affects all school bus drivers the next day. And some jobs are just like that. And so I really want to do my best to bring that bridge of, we're a part of the education system. And so we want to be, one, that when we walk up, we have a lanyard, so we can use the bathroom too, or whatever that looks like. And we can be a part of your community and go to the games. And our drivers know the wide receiver or whoever, the basketball team, and, because it's a lot of fun when you feel part of that family. And sometimes, the bus driver is just the bus driver, and it's not really that way. They're, they love it. They love being a part. And they get attached to their routes. Trust me, I try to take them away, and it's not a good idea. So.
I do actually have just one quick question, and it might be more for Jason. But, you know, we were working with a different provider previously, and now we're likely to switch over. We'll take official action later in the meeting. But in terms of, you raised a point about sort of communication, right, and letting people know about delays. I know we have an internal system that we use to notify. Is anything about that going to change?
So we use something called Bus Bulletin right now, and they also use Bus Bulletin. I'm double checking.
We have that to offer, yes.
Yes. So we will definitely still have something. There will be, it'll be a transition. I've been through changing in bus, not in this position, but as a principal, but it is, it's tough. It's tough. It's hard. It's, we're used to things. But we've already started talking about pending board approval, starting off right away with just having some transition meetings, getting ready. What's nice is, because of where summer school falls for us, the first thing they would do is summer school. So it'll be kind of this intro to the district of just 15 days. What does it look like? And we'll get that ready before we start going into, you know, what the main thing looks like. But we will, it'll be a lot of communication to parents. There will be things that will look maybe a little different, but we'll try to make everything look as same as possible.
Okay. And I guess I'm curious, we've had our current company for a while, and I think the switch to that one maybe predates your arrival to with the district.
Yes, I think they, I think you, the district switched while I was away. So I, Grand Prairie was here when I was principal.
Got it. Got it. Okay. Well, then I won't impute nepotism or anything, right? Some kind of favorite. No, it's not like that. But I guess I was curious, right, in thinking about whether you had any knowledge about the last time we transitioned and kind of what the community feedback was about that. And, you know, obviously, that hasn't been a part of your experience, but I'm glad to know we're being proactive about communicating the change. And hopefully, we'll get some feedback, positive feedback. I hope that everything goes smoothly and, you know, but if there are any issues, we have ways of getting that information too.
Yeah. And I would, absolutely, I can look at that. And I see Dr. Gore's ready to jump in maybe. But I would also say that our transportation person in the district, Annie Harrington, is on top of it, has put in so many processes just in her first year. And she, we, we've already talked about what it looks like to have a new company, but also the opportunity to then do some of the things that I think we've been talking about wanting to do. But I'll let Dr.
My memory when we switched over from Grand Prairie was that we were really lucky that many of the Grand Prairie, probably to your chagrin, so many of your drivers at the time ended up switching companies, I think, out of their loyalty to the routes and maybe the, so I don't ask you to speak to that, and I realize that's a delicate, you know, thing. And maybe that was rare, or maybe that's typical within the industry. But that was kind of a phenomenon we experienced, and I think that did help in many cases limit the disruption from the family's perspective. I think some of our systems behind the scenes needed to change with some of the different coordination, but.
That is extremely common.
Okay.
Yeah, they follow their students, especially in the special needs realm, as well as elementary levels. They tend to want to follow them all the way through until they graduate, so.
I suppose, I know you've spoken to Jason, is the depot that you're going to use, I know you have one in Mount Prospect and one somewhere else pretty close, right?
Yeah, we have Mount Prospect, we have Arlington Heights.
Okay, so.
We have you surrounded.
Okay, great. You've been closing in on us.
Yes, yes.
I think it's inevitable, but yeah, no. Okay, great. So that, that's helpful too about approximate locations if a bus goes down, being able to send, and, you know, a backup bus is important.
Were there any other questions, Chris?
First of all, I'm, as others have said, I'm really floored that all of you came tonight. I mean, that really shows that this is more than just a transactional relationship here, and that really says a lot. So thank you for being here. Vicki asked what kind of questions you might get. I actually have one. It's a technology question. And it came to mind last year when my kids were taking the bus, they don't this year, but they did last year. And the bus wasn't often late, but sometimes it was. And I remember thinking to myself, it would be really cool if there was an app, I could go on my phone and see exactly where the bus is, right? Like the Metro has, and, you know, when you call an Uber, you can see where Uber is. Is that, I know that technology exists. Is that something you guys have ever thought about or could adopt, or just curious?
So yes, it exists. 214 currently has it in every one of their vehicles. So it is something that's coming. It kind of reminds me of the backup camera, and then the cameras on the buses. Over time, I think that technology's coming to everyone.
They just become ubiquitous.
Yeah, it's going to be here eventually. But over time, if that's something your district needs, it's definitely something we can provide and have provided.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Yeah.
That takes us into our Board Governance Committee meeting. Corinne, if you'd like to share about the committee?
Sure. On January 7th, the inaugural Board Governance Committee came together. This is myself, Jen Choak, Chris Leto, and Dr. Gore. We had a really productive meeting. The agenda was really pretty simple. One was going through and updating the governance charter, so that can come back to the full board for approval, and making sure that we were covering all the bases and using the language that would be appropriate in order to move forward with that. And then the other piece was figuring out what our next priority was going to be when it comes to our work. And that really came out to be succession planning for leadership. That was like the first thing prior to, that had a timestamp on it, since we will be coming up, and we are coming up into an election, which means we'll be transitioning some of our board leadership, et cetera. So we decided to move on with that. The next steps for that, Mary talked to, went to our attorney about a couple of items that came out about board policy. And then we just need to get the next one scheduled, and we'll start working in a collaborative document about just brainstorming what our succession planning ideas are. And when I say succession planning, I guess I should not, like we hand off a crown or something, but that would be cool. If we want to do it with like cheer, you know, if one person, or, yes, pass, seminary ceremonial passing of the gavel. But by succession planning, what I mean is, how do we vote in, select vice presidents and presidents' leadership for the board? Right now, it's a little bit murky, and so this process Right now, it's a little bit murky. And so this process is to make, bringing all of that into some sort of clarity and documentation so that we, everybody knows what's going on and where. So we're waiting on our next meeting. But we'll take action on the, the charter later on in this meeting. But I think that's it, unless Chris or Jen or Dr. Gore wanted to say anything about the, the meeting.
It was a good meeting. Good start, I thought.
Committee on Committees.
Still waiting for that one. No, I thank you, Corinne, for your leadership of this committee. I thought it went very well and appreciate you taking that on, so. Thank you for leading us.
At this time, everyone has received a copy of the proposed charter. Are there any questions, comments, concerns about what was presented? Vicki?
Just a comment. I mean, thank you so much to the three of you for being on this committee. And I, you know, when you spoke about the timeliness of it, Corinne, I think the other thing is, you know, the onboarding of a new board member too. And I feel like that's something that we talk about every two years and then it just never comes to fruition. So it's kind of exciting that now it is and it's very timely and, yeah, so that's, it's just a, yeah. I'm happy to see that it's come this far and excited to see where it goes, so thank you.
I did just have a question. So in the charter, under duties and responsibilities of the committee, item C, sub item B. This idea of developing succession plans for the president and vice president in order to ensure a smooth transition of leadership and maintain board stability. I don't know if it was intended necessarily, but that phrasing made me think of some level of mentorship or coaching or something, right? Something that allows the previous vice president or the previous president to be able to kind of bring up to speed the next person to fill that role. And so I, I guess I wondered if it would be possible, assuming that was the intention of the committee, to bring that out in a more overt sort of way. And then that idea sort of made me think of the sort of general mentorship program that we have, right? I, I think in a, in a very informal way, many of us, when we joined the board, were kind of paired up with a slightly more experienced board member, in some instances, very slightly more. And we've never had any formality around that. We've never had any, you know, check in every month, check in after the meeting, how did that go for you? I don't know if you all felt like this was part of the work that this committee should do. But that was one item that I thought, like, oh, if, if there was anything else I wanted to add or wish that was presented here, that was the one thing, like some kind of formal mentorship program.
Those, those items which are absolutely applicable, and I made a note of them just simply because the, the way that the charter is written is that we, it's open to make the decisions and figure out what it is we want to have. So the, see the establishment orientation procedures would take care of the board mentorship, mentorship plan. Roberta already has a fantastic packet. So our job would be to figure out how we wanted to complete that with board work, mentorship being one of them. So for both of those items, that would be something that we would, as part of our establishment of those.
Yeah. Okay, that's fair. And I appreciate you reminding me of that, right? That this is meant to be really high level and then each of these items sort of contains a variety of more granular actual tactics or strategies for doing the high level thing. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments about that? I mean, half of our board basically was involved in this, so you all know what this is about, so. Okay, okay. In that case, we will take action on this item later in the meeting. And I did notice, you know, having shared the Board Governance Committee update in light of the action needed for the charter, it probably makes sense that we take off the Board Governance Committee component from the communications portion of the agenda, right? I'm assuming you don't have any.
Unless you really want to hear from me twice.
No, it's, it's not, it's not that. Just, I think that will be a standing, yeah, that will be a standing item for future. But because we've had the need for the information for the sake of taking action, it would be redundant today. Okay, moving on then to our FOIA report.
Everyone's favorite part of every meeting. All right, we had a streak of no FOIAs, but no longer. We have four FOIA requests that we've received between December 18th through January 16th. We have sent our responses and you can see details of the report in the board packet. That is all.
That takes us to the consent agenda. I understand Jen reviewed the bills this month?
Yep, they all look good.
I would expect nothing less.
Yep.
Okay.
Agreed.
In that case, if I can have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Seconds. Member Chung?
Yes.
Member Choak?
Yes.
Member Qualcheck?
Yes.
Member Leto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
President Fay?
Yes.
Okay, and now we arrive at unfinished business regarding the fee schedule for the 2025-26 school year. As a reminder, we reviewed this information at our meeting last month. And now is our chance to approve or reject, I guess, these, these fees. Are there any additional questions about this item? Okay, seeing none, if I can have a motion to approve these student fees for the 2025-26 school year.
So moved.
Second. Member Choak?
Yes.
Member Qualcheck?
Yes.
Member Leto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
Member Chung?
Yes.
President Fay? Yes. At this time, we have another opportunity for community comments, if anyone would like to speak to the board at this time. Okay, seeing no interest, we will move on to our new business, which is the first read of the board policies update. So I guess I'll give a little recap here. Our policy committee met, gosh, I don't even remember when. Oh, December 16th. It's right here for me. Thank you, Roberta. We met on December 16th to discuss some of the updates to our board policy packet. As in previous months, I think many of these were just, you know, changing the legal citations or updating, you know, very small aspects of the language. I don't recall that there was anything substantive that we really harried over. Yes, it was very, very high level, but if there are any questions or comments about any of the changes that were made? Okay, well, you have some opportunity to comb through and find where all the colons were added and the semicolons and take issue with them if you like, and we will take action on this item next month. That brings us to action on our five-year transportation bid. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, I'm skipping ahead. Pardon me. Okay. Yes, so action on the charter for the Board Governance Committee. And we've already discussed just 35 seconds ago. I don't think there are any additional questions. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Board Governance Committee charter.
And makes motion.
Second. Corinne really wanted in on that one. Member Qualcheck?
Yes.
Member Leto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
Member Chung?
Yes.
Member Choak?
Yes.
President Fay? Yes. Congratulations. I know this was a, a much desired, and it is, I think, for many of us, a much desired addition to the work of the board. So I'm very excited to see what continues to come from the committee in the future. Now, we can talk about our five-year transportation bid. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the contract recommended with Grand Prairie Transit. So moved. Second. Member Leto?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Vice President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
Member Chung?
Yes.
Member Choak?
Yes.
Member Qualcheck?
Yes.
President Fay? Yes. Thank you all again for being here. What a wonderful opportunity to witness your contract being approved. Pam, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wanted to thank the transportation people who came here. It was a dynamic and collaborative presentation and very entertaining. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I hope you warmed up the bus outside, right? That's how you get around? Okay, sorry about that. Let me see. Oh, Vision 2020, I'm sorry, Vision 2030 resolution. So we have action to take on this. Mary, did you want to speak to that?
We're not taking.
We originally were going to do action, but we're actually, you know, because there's nothing really time sensitive in this, yeah, we'll just. And this is something that those of us who attended the triple I conference in November were able to kind of be present for the introduction of this initiative. But there's a lot in the packet with background. But this is a very collaborative effort from multiple state organizations, including the Illinois Association of School Boards, Illinois Principals Association, Illinois School Business Officials, Illinois Association of Regional Superintendents, to name a few. And really, this is a resolution before the board to take it, action on next month to demonstrate the commitment and support for the initiatives for public education into the future.
Okay, and I apologize, we were on such a roll of, you know, taking action, that I thought we were just going to keep going. So thanks for bringing me in there. Are there any questions about this item? Okay, I do have one. I'm just curious, I understand this to be largely symbolic. Are there any consequences if we decided we didn't want to approve it?
No, I think really the, the vision presented was the more districts that are taking these actions to adopt this demonstrates sort of a unified front. And then there's a toolkit available to us to keep engaging with like local media and, you know, there's some talking points. So there's, it's really, I think, an effort to try to be strategic in the messaging in the way that we're articulating the priorities around public education in the, in the decade ahead.
Well, in the half a decade.
Half a decade. We only have five years to get this done.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, seeing no additional interest and discussion on this item, we'll move on to the Jess Colk-Determined Strategic Communications Contract.
Thank you. So this is also not an action item, but you have some information in the board packet about this contract that the board will be asked to take action on next month. But tonight, I just wanted to be sure to give a high-level overview of this and also answer any questions if there are any. This is a firm that is specializes not just in school district communication, but also works with municipalities, nonprofits, for-profits. And their work really for us would be around crisis communication support. We're very fortunate to have an investment in a full-time communication specialist in-house, which I think we all see daily the benefits from and just the incredible difference it makes. Thank you to Heather Salerno. And just the investment in that position has become so, so invaluable. And we got a glimpse into managing crisis communication recently. And through that experience, as well as through collaboration with many other school districts in our area, this is a firm that comes so highly recommended in supporting when a crisis happens that demands an even more comprehensive, strategic and immediate response on multiple fronts. So this really would be sort of an on-reserve type of partnership. There's a lot of services they can do to keep strengthening our work and be consultants for us, so there's no real limit. But I think at this point in time, the, the real desire for having this contract approved would be to be kind of having them, if needed, in a crisis situation and not really expanding the need beyond that on a day-to-day.
Any questions about that, Chris?
Thank you, Dr. Gore, for that contact. Just curious, what would the mechanism be to trigger engaging this firm? And would the board know if and when that happened?
Yeah, we could definitely have some kind of internal process to make sure the board felt like they were involved in the initiation. And truly, these are the types of scenarios where the board does, you know, have that type of knowledge as things are rapidly developing. So I think it makes perfect sense to, you know, should this be something the board's interested in approving, to have some sort of internal protocol for us to follow. In that there would be an approval or an agreement that this is, this warrants this level of higher level expertise.
Yeah, I agree. I, you know, whether that, I'm not saying that has to be part of what we approve next month, but I do think that would be good, just to have some guardrails around this, so. Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions? Pam?
I don't have a question. I have a comment. In prior Libraryland experience, our staff was involved in something that we felt was a crisis. We had a gas leak and we had to immediate evacuate the, the library. And then we had to, we thought we had it under control. We had a person who was our communicator. It did not work. And we had people coming up to the building trying to get in. The fire department kind of staged, you know, a hands against the doors kind of thing. We didn't know how serious it would be and we didn't know if the building would explode. And so it was a bit nerve-wracking. Now granted, this was within the last decade. So I'm sure that that library has improved their communication. But I can tell you, sitting out in a, in a vacant parking lot, staring at the building to see if it was going to go up in flames. And we didn't even know what the crisis was. We had to call different utility companies to come and check. And we didn't know if it was a bomb threat. I mean, we, staff had no idea why they were being, you know, told to evacuate, evacuate, evacuate now. Turned out it was a gas leak.
Well, and I think just exactly to that point, I mean, a lot of that now, I think we, in that scenario, probably do have the internal capacity to handle those types of scenarios quite competently. Maybe not perfectly, but competently. And I think the difference maybe now even from 10 years ago is the rapid interfacing sometimes through social media, that things can quickly go viral. And then that viral phenomenon really can be its own challenge, just to manage like the external knowledge. And, you know, so we would really want to be, you know, careful about the way that we would, again, need to tap into a layer of expertise that's beyond what we would do. And we have a very competent capacity among not only Heather, but also our administrative team. And also we're fortunate to have such collaborative relationship with colleagues who, you know, are also really generous in the way they help. You know, so all of those relationships help us. And still, it, it, it was through some of those collaborations with colleagues who have been in through even more crises and higher level, kind of higher media attention situations that spoke about the invaluable support of having this available if needed. If and only if it's needed.
So procedurally, if there were a crisis, you would contact Kim and Kim would get ahold of us? How would that work?
You know what, I could draft sort of maybe something that could be a draft and then we can maybe, I could share that out with the board in my weekly update and then maybe we, I can get your input through that channel. And then in anticipation, have that ready before any action would be taken. Does that seem?
Sure.
Okay.
And would you need all board members saying, or would you need a quorum?
You know, I think that's something we could talk about if the board would be comfortable having, you know, Kim designate that authority or if that would be something that board action, if it would be, have to be formally taken, probably would not be as time-sensitive as we would need it to be. So we think we would want to consider having some process that allowed for quick decision, but also a mechanism for input, so people felt like there was a process around to quality control the usage.
Right.
And I think if it were a high-level crisis, you would not want to get in, you know, to, to waste any seconds getting ahold of us all.
Yes.
So there would be one designated person perhaps, and if that designated person could. And if that designated person could not answer within whatever time... I mean, seconds really count. Then it would go to the next designated person. And I think that we would need to be comfortable with having that representation and then having it explained to us. I've been through a number of different trainings and I just think that you don't waste time.
Of course. Anyone else have any thoughts? Okay. Oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I thought the process would be by us approving it that you would then let us know when you'd be using it because it'd be an as-needed basis. And I would think it would be really only high-level crisis like we very rarely, rarely have. Keep it that way.
Right.
Why don't I, you know, another option I could do and I hadn't done is I can reach out to colleagues who do have this type of access and I'll see how they manage that. And also put together a draft of something that, you know, marries the importance of time efficiency, but also a process that there is a feeling of assurance that this is a protected use.
Yeah, I think that would be good. I think I'm sort of open to both angles. I think I'd be interested in some kind of board sign-off, given that, you know, there's a cost to using the service. But at the same time, the type of situation that we would use this for is something the board would already be aware of anyway. So it might end up being a little bit redundant to, like, require board approval at any level for engaging these services when, you know, if it's a situation where admin's already on the ground and kind of in the thick of it.
And maybe it would be board knowledge, you know, and like a prerequisite level of communication with board president. And these are just things I think we could draft through. And maybe there is a need... And if a month isn't enough time to deliberate around this, we could certainly expand the timeline. So...
I don't think it needs to be too bureaucratic. I guess all I'm getting at is if something happened and you, Dr. Gore, thought, you know what? This is where we need to engage this firm that we've contracted with. I mean, all I would say you'd do is tell Kim that you want to do that. Kim would quickly poll the board, does anybody object to Dr. Gore reaching out? And if... And that's it, right? I don't think it needs to be any more formal.
The only thing, though, is that the nature of some of these situations through speaking with colleagues is that it's not even always that practical to get that much time around a response. Sometimes that might be very obtainable. You know, I think it's situational. But some of the scenarios, I have spoken to colleagues who have been on that. They're like, you're not always afforded that hour to kind of get that level of communication. But it's really what the board's comfortable with.
I think let's brainstorm it and see.
Yeah.
Hang on one second, Pam. Corinne hasn't spoken yet.
I just wanted to interject. This is one of those places where I think that the board needs to stay up on the balcony. We have designated Dr. Gore as the person who is going to be managing crises in our stead. Informing, like, I have felt informed during every crisis of ever that we have had since I have been on the board and find, personally, find that sufficient. In this circumstance, I believe our role is simply to empower Dr. Gore to make those decisions in the moment. I wouldn't want her to spend any time trying to get approval from us for something that is so of the moment as this would be.
Pam, go ahead.
I agree 100% with Corinne. And if there is an evacuate or a lockdown, I sure don't want administration spending time trying to get ahold of us. I want them to be empowered to do the right thing, to mitigate terrible circumstances as best as possible and not waste a single second trying to get an okay.
Sure. Okay. Well, I think, Dr. Gore, you have some options to pursue as far as how we could navigate the various ideas for how to go about engaging this firm. And so we'll bring it back next month and potentially take action at that time. Okay. That brings us now to board discussion, which we have none. So our communication reports. I do have a couple of items to share with you all. First, we will not be meeting on February 6th. We had a tentative meeting scheduled. We will not be meeting that day. Second, everyone should have a document at their place that is headed acknowledgment of mandated reporter status. If you could please take a moment before you leave the meeting tonight to fill that out and tender it to Roberta to keep on file on all of our behavs... Behavs? And then I do have one other thing. So we had a lot of interest in the student board member process. And among those who were interested in serving, I thought it made the most sense to literally draw their names from a basket. So I'm going to do that with much pomp and circumstance. All of the names are right here. It's like a magic trick. And I'll shake it around. No, I haven't learned that one yet. I'm not that good. Okay. So... So the lucky person who will be helping to select our student board member is... Now we can have the drum roll. Is Jen! There's no cheating involved. You were all here for the process. I didn't do anything. Okay, so congratulations. I know that was... It was not, I swear. They're not all Jen.
Like the Westbrook hot reads. The deck is stacked.
I should have had somebody observe me write all the names down. I swear, they're all different. In any event, I know this is a much coveted role for you. So very glad that you can participate. And then I'll leave it to the two of you to coordinate the timing and all of that. But we're excited for updates as far as that goes. Okay, that's all I have. That brings us to NSSCO reports.
Yes, thank you. NSSCO Governing Board met on Wednesday, January 8th, last Wednesday. You will see in the board packet is the presentation that Dr. Schnurr presented to us on the proposed strategic plan for NSSCO. Very exciting. You'll recall when we met last time, I think I reported that we had had two strategic planning sessions, December 3rd and December 10th, which were full-day sessions, a lot of fun. Dr. Gore, Dr. Kays, Sarah Taberski were all there, representing the district, in addition to myself. And really, they were two really great days that, more than anything, just reaffirmed the cooperative's, you know, dedication to NSSCO, right? Where everybody there, you know, I think, I forget who said this, but someone said this was kind of a, you know, a great meeting just to reestablish the fact that we are really all here for these kids and this means a lot to us. So it was really great, lots of great collaboration. One of the things that we looked at, like any good strategic plan does, is a look at our mission values and mission, vision, values. And we decided that, you know what? These are pretty solid. There's really not a lot to change there. So we kind of moved on to looking at what should the cooperative's strategic priorities be for the next three to five years? And there's actually were four that we came up with after much scrutinizing and wordsmithing. And so because of that, I will actually read them because I do think the words matter here, since we spent, you know, six or seven hours coming up with them. But the first one here, and these are not in priority order. These are just the four strategic pillars that the group came up with. The first one is instruction and programming. "We will design and utilize a continuous improvement process for instruction and program development that is responsive to the evolving needs of all students, recognizing that special education, like all education, is an ever-evolving space and the needs of our students today are not the same as the needs of our students were 10 years ago and will not be the same as the needs of our students five years from now. And so making sure that as a cooperative, we are always out in front of what our kids are going to need really critical." "Facilities and finance. We will develop and execute a fiscally responsible, long-range facilities plan that prioritizes a safe and supportive environment for all students and staff." Facilities is definitely an area that I would say has, if I'm being honest, was maybe not been a huge priority of the co-op over the last 10 years. A lot of the facilities are becoming pretty outdated and not quite responsive to what is needed for our kids today. And so, you know, how do we, knowing that every member district has their own facilities needs, which of course are expensive, you know, how do we manage all of that and still make sure that we're providing what is needed for the co-op is another one? Governance. This was one that I would say, as we were going through, what are these priorities going to be, was one that really, I would say, came out on top as the most talked-about one. But we will implement a well-defined advisory plus governance structure that ensures collaborative decision-making and engagement of all member district superintendents and NSSCO. One of the things that came out, and this is why it was great having all of the member district admins there, was, you know, the admins, the superintendents, the business officers aren't always feeling like they have a seat at the table in the operational aspects of what goes on in the co-op. So yes, we have a governing board and that's great. And you all here for me every month, just like every other governing board member reports back to their member districts. But that isn't quite the same as having an actual operating committee where the superintendents and business officers have a real seat at the table every month on what's actually going on. So the idea is not to replace the governing board, but to augment it a little bit. So this came across loud and clear as something that we definitely need. And then highly qualified staff. "We will recruit and retain high-quality staff through effective hiring and a positive work culture that demonstrates support, value, recognition, and growth, recognizing, of course, that none of the other things that we talked about doing are possible if we don't keep hiring and retaining the high-quality staff that we have today." So those are the four strategic areas of focus. The next steps here, the reason why this is in your board packets and the reason why I wanted you all to give this a look ahead of time is the governing board will vote on this in our February meeting, which is before the next time we meet. And so I want to give you all a chance to look through this and ask questions. And hopefully, when we're done with that, the approval for me to vote yes on this plan on the behalf of our district. So I will take any questions, comments, thoughts, anyone has?
Thank you for taking the time, all of you, actually, for doing it. And I love the pictures of you and there's quite a few of you in here.
Yeah, I love how they...
Action shots. Love it.
Yes.
No, great. It looks great and can't wait to see it put into action. So thank you, Chris. Thank you all.
Anyone else? Jen?
Well, I guess I do have a question. So in like the next steps of implementation, I assume that that is now going back to like NSSCO to like start to think about what the implementation plan is? Given that it's a co-op, are there like other pieces of that that are different than like a normal school district plan?
Correct. So there is an implementation team that consists of member district members, admin team, two governing board members, NSSCO admin and staff. And so there's a team that's actually meeting next Wednesday and the following Wednesday to then take this plan and figure out, okay, these are great areas of focus. What are we going to do now, right? What are we going to do? How are we going to measure success? And HYA, who's been wonderful in helping navigate us through this, will be also facilitating that effort.
That's helpful. It looks great. I was excited by the four areas and really thinking about like what it means for how our strategic plans work together, right? I think this is something, given that 214 has a new strategic plan and the NSCO has a new strategic plan, ours is figure-in, right? Like, what does it mean to really think about how these work together and what we really want for all students in this area from pre-K to 12 regardless of where they are? So I appreciate you guys continuing to think about that and I think it's something we need to continue to think about as these plans all get finalized.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you.
Do I have everyone's blessing to vote yes on this plan?
I was just getting there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I did not hear any objection. But if we could just sort of give a thumbs up to Chris that he can go back on behalf of our board and vote in support of the NSSCO strategic plan?
See nodding heads?
Yes.
I see thumbs?
Pam, did you have something you want to say?
No, I thought we would take a vote.
It doesn't have to be formal.
It doesn't need to be a formal vote. I just, if anyone had an objection, I, you know, would hear that out, but...
I mean, I object to all of the pictures of you, right?
Yes, I do. As do I, believe me.
Like you were the only one at this meeting.
I objected to that as well.
No chickens.
Yes.
I mean, what's a meeting without a chicken?
Right.
Anyway. Okay.
Well, thank you, everybody. That's my report.
Okay, sounds good. Ed Foundation?
So we met on January 7th. Jason was there. We had a lovely discussion around the grant cycle. They approved the grants. I know that those have gone out. So congratulations to all the people who were granted some money for some exciting things going on in the district. The one that I've seen that I know is out is Lions Park got their Gaga Pit, which is really exciting. I saw that announced on the PTO's Facebook page this afternoon. So I don't know how everyone else has been informed, so I will not spoil all the surprises. But there were some really exciting ones that went out today or in the last week or so. Our next meeting is January 28th. And we are getting ready for the gala, which is the... Give me a second. April something? Yes, April 5th. So I'm hearing it. I just wanted to make sure. It is April 5th. It will be casino-themed again. They do have some exciting new tables coming up for the casino theme. So, you know, be excited for all the gambling for no money in your evening. So that'll be an exciting night.
It's the best kind. You don't lose any at least.
Right. You just donate your money for the ticket and then they give you things to go and have play games with, so.
Okay. Well, looking forward to seeing as many of us as possible there and very excited about the Gaga Pit, although I know it'll be a couple of months before anybody can use it outdoors, at least. So hopefully, everybody can reserve their excitement until then. Then we have PTO reports. Let's start with Fairview.
So exciting starting with. They talked about their fundraiser, which they're going to do beach volleyball. They are going to give everybody socks who participates. They're going to have the five top fundraisers. They're going to have the prize like principal for the morning, a fire station experience. You could be in the police car ride or Public Works ride or a private movie at AMC. Pretty exciting. So, yeah, they get a pick. It's kind of cool. Then they'll do like class winners, classroom winners, top class. And then they'll like pass around like a trophy within the grades, like, we're leading. No, we'll take the trophy now. We're leading. You know, fun stuff like that. And then if they get, if they raise 30,000, which is the goal, then they'll do a staff volleyball game so that the kids can watch the staff play volleyball, which sounds like a lot of fun. Fairview Cares, they donated two carloads of winter gear to the village. Very excited. They had a lot of stuff. For February, they're talking about Valentine's, maybe doing something with Lorry's. And also they are, someone has a connection with a friend of theirs in California to maybe do with a school that's been impacted by the fires out there. Then they talked about, you know, things coming up, plant sale, science fair, things like that. And I don't know the next meeting. It is next month, though.
Sounds good. Can we move to Lions Park?
Sure. So PTO is really excited to share about the Gaga Pit. Thank you for stealing my thunder, all of you. I appreciate it. It's like my one thing that I had. But they are, PTO is very, very excited about this. This is something that came up as from the Principals Advisory Councils, which was great. We had their Lions Park members and one of them kind of gave us the stink eye. Like, when are we going to get our Gaga Pit? So here we go. Thank you to the Ed Foundation for providing that. Coming up, there is the PTO Science Fair on February 6th, the Family Trivia Night on February 28th. This is something that started last year and it's family-friendly trivia, pizza, prizes. It's actually a really fun night. And the last thing is that the Lions Park PTO provides materials to support making blankets for kids that are staying at the Advocate Children's Hospital in Park Ridge on behalf of one of our former students, Lauren Graver, who passed away in 2017. This is part of the Makerspace Curriculum. This is part of the Makerspace Curriculum and students are making fleece blankets as part of a bigger project focusing on community service and how small acts of kindness can make a big difference. The next meeting is February 3rd at 7:00 PM in the Lions Park Teachers Lounge.
Wonderful. You know, I was just thinking, I know we had an item on our Governance Committee Charter for board retreats. And with the Gaga Pits that are proliferating in the district, I really think that we should have an opportunity to, you know, for those like me who don't know how to play.
Pelt each other with balls.
I don't know what it involves even, so, maybe that should be part of, part of our retreat. Anyway.
The next president won't be determined.
There you go. You want to talk succession planning, it's winner take all in the Gaga Pit, that's how you get this, this seat. If we could move to Westbrook?
Westbrook was January 14th, so this week. And I just have to say how inspirational it is to be among those PTO enthusiasts. They're just so caring and so thoughtful and so kind. There is a specialist among them who is, has become an allergy expert. So when they're looking at treats for the kids, all heads turn to her. And, and she has given the name of a company, and I'm looking to see, I know I wrote it down, I think it's Young Earth or Youth Earth. And, and it's a company that is pretty much allergen free. And it's really a blessing to have someone on that team who can give direction so that nobody gets sick eating, eating the treats. I think the greatest, there were two things I wanted to transmit after that. The first is that the PTO sponsored a great number of books, as they did before, at the book fair. So there was $500 donated to Carol Capra to purchase things and every child will get a book. And the second thing is that they were talking about how to do, how to gracefully do St. Patrick's Day. So they're not calling it St. Patrick's Day after a little bit give and take, they're going to call it Lucky Leprechaun Day, so that it's more easily translated. And then they decided to do certain things that would go along with that. They have icons and things that they'll be presenting with the little leprechauns. So I thought that that was really a caring reach out and it just made me so happy. And they're just really so enthused. You know, the president, Laura DeGrucci, is just, it's kindness and it's just so wonderful to see. And no matter how tired I am when I'm going in there, I come out just feeling so, so grateful that we have people like that in our community. So, so that's my PTO report.
Thank you very much. We'll move to Lincoln.
So Lincoln has not, their PTO hasn't met since our last board meeting. Their next meeting is Monday, January 27th at 7:00.
Okay. I feel like this is the second time we've missed a report from Lincoln. We need to, like, sync up with them better so that we can hear from everybody. Okay, all right, well, thank you for that. We do not have an item for closed session. And that brings us to adjournment, if I could have a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second?
I'm going to go slow. Member Nelson?
Yes.
Yes. Vice President Bennett Kill?
Yes.
Member Chung?
Yes.
Member Choak?
Yes.
Yes.
President Fay?
Yes. And only Member Qualchuk really wants to stick around. She'll have to stay by herself.